You're good to go, Mayor.
All right, well, welcome back to finance, everyone. I know you've missed it. There has been something missing in your life, especially Anthony and Kim, so welcome back. Happy to be here, and we've got several items on the agenda. But I will tell everyone now, we do have a hard stop at 5:30, so I will quit talking and turn it over to whoever is going to kick us off today.
I think our first order of business is the sidewalk recoupment program, so I'm not sure if that's Sean or Mr. Mensah, but whomever.
It's actually Catherine, and she is stuck running late, so she asked us to go to the next item, and then she will do that when she gets here.
Okay, so that would be the water fund presentation, or the water rate increase presentation from Mr. Kaminsky.
Okay, good. Can you, can I share my screen then? I just bring it up? That it? Does everybody see that? Anybody hear me?
We got you, Ken. We can hear you loud and clear, and you are sharing the screen.
Okay. So, what I'm addressing now is not the city council, I'm addressing the utilities trust. So that's an important distinction here, because this is a business, and it has to run like a business, and so the council are, are the utility trust authority, and so normal utilities authority, we're going to talk about a needed rate increase. And as any business, we're going to start off talking about striking a balance. The important piece is the revenue stability for the utility, because if you don't have that revenue stability, you can't perform, and you can't service your customers. But we also realize we have to talk about economic development. As any business, more customers are good, so we like customers. We also talk about conservation promotion, because it is a limited resource. So we do want to stress and, and get, schedule our rates to promote conservation. And then we do want to think of affordability, so we don't want to have our rates so high that the normal person has a hard time affording just the basic service, which is water utility. They're going to go over some things, and we're going to talk about previous water rate adjustment requests, how it went in the past, and the need for a new rate adjustment, and then designing the rates for residential and commercial customers. And then there are other considerations that we do not have now, that a lot of water utilities provide for, for revenues. And we'll touch on that, but because everybody, because our customers have to vote on the rates, a lot of these other considerations were essentially put aside, because we didn't want to confuse our customers and add too much on the ballot. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through the last water rate increase of what we did and how we did it. It was 2015, so it was, it will be six years ago. It did pass with a 67% vote. There's a lot of reasons why we needed the rate increase. The thing on the left-hand side is what we proposed, the stuff on the right-hand side is we actually did. So that's important for our customers. We, we promised we'd do certain things, and we performed on those items that we said. A big piece was our water treatment plant. Again, in the interest of time, I won't go through everything we checked off the list. I'd be happy to talk to you about this, and so would our water treatment plant people. And then this is a view of our water treatment plant. The other piece of the puzzle that we requested rates for was for new wells. The blue dots or the blue squares are our new wells that have been drilled, they have not been outfitted yet. But we're, we're building the buildings around it, and we're starting to connect the water lines. And then the other piece is water line instruct, installations. Throughout the last several years, you've seen this go up and down Robinson, up and down Chautauqua, Timbuktu, replacing a lot of large diameter water lines. So again, just let's get into the need for the rate adjustment now. There's really three big-ticket items. One is AMI, Advanced Metering Infrastructure. This would outfit all of our customers with brand-new meters that will be read essentially electronically or through radio waves. And so our customer service people will be able to, when you move in or move out of a house, or want to change your address, or want to start a service, they'd be able to do that essentially at their desk. They don't have to send somebody out to get a final reading. They don't have to send somebody out to start up the meter. We could, they could do that at their desk. It'd also be beneficial to our customers, because through, when you set these things up, you would end up with a customer portal, and they'd be able to look at their own rates, as we'll be able to tell our customer service people, hey, this customer's residential customer is using abnormal amount of water today or this week, rather than wait for a meter reader to read it at the end of a month. So it's a whole lot of advantages for our customers. It's a big-ticket item, about $14 million to do the whole city. The blending and disinfection is a DEQ requirement, that's not an option. We've been holding off DEQ for the last two years.
Ken, before you move off that, could I ask you, is the plan to replace all 40,000 meters at once, or do it over a period of two or three years?
We were thinking about spreading it over two or three years, but then talking it through a lot of these, the manufacturers and the people that put it in, and our own group here, we thought we just, you just bite the bullet and you do it. It's just, they could do that. It's, it's a long, long, long process. You do have a contractor that has to replace every single meter of about 40,000 meters. So it's, it's something you, it takes about a year, nine months or a year just to get through. The blending and disinfection piece again is we're very lucky to have our well supply. We have, with our new wells that we're drilling, we'll have about 40 wells out east. We're lucky enough, like I said, when the water is a good quality water, we don't use anything but good quality water, and we don't have to disinfect the water. That's, that's kind of a, a thing of the past. DEQ and other states and other organizations would like us to make sure we disinfect the water. Obviously, we disinfect the water, leaving our water treatment plant, because that's surface water. And DEQ would be more comfortable if we also disinfected the well. One of the stipulations is, you know, we have to take 90 bacteriological samples out in the distribution system every month. And, and we even have a subsequent water system, which is University of Oklahoma. So, and anytime we have a bad back tea test in 90 samples a month, every month, you know, if somebody sticks their finger in the jar, or if it's a really, really windy day, you can have bad back tea test. If that happens, we're required to go back to everything that was working that day and take a back tea sample at that source. So if it's in the summertime, we could have 30, 35 wells working in addition to our treatment plant. Yet a bad back tea test, you got to take 35 samples to prove that everything that was working was good. So it's just to go back and trace where the, the back tea might have come from. But the same thing with the lead copper rules and, and the secondary contaminants. We have to test the source of supply, which was every one of those wells. So that's a big piece of the puzzle, and the other is that DEQ really, really wants us to disinfect all of our water and have, and carry a residual throughout town, which we personally would feel more comfortable with that anyway. So that's not like something we're fighting, we think it's the right thing to do. But you can either have 40 chlorination systems, one for each well, or we can put the, all the water together, one location, have a big, you know, 3 million gallon tank with a pumping facility, and one big, not treatment plant necessarily, but it would be a treatment facility for chlorinating and disinfecting the wells before it goes into town. That's a requirement. Again, we've been putting that off, but that's necessary. And then the horizontal water well, this is one of our items that we wanted to do. Our wells right now cost about a million dollars apiece. A horizontal water well is just like you've thought about for oil drilling and stuff, where you just, you drill down, and then you go horizontally. This has not been done for water wells in Oklahoma, other than alluvial water wells, which is like right, right alongside rivers and streams and stuff. But this looks like it has a good potential. The reason we did not do that while we were drilling these wells is again, our last water rate increase, we told our customers, we need this money, and we're going to get you an additional 2 million gallons a day. And so while this horizontal water well looks like it costs three times as much, and it might have as much as four or five or six times the, the results, the, the, the volume of water, it's an unknown, and we just didn't want to, we promised our customers last time, we'd get 2 million gallons a day. We used traditional methods with nine wells, and we got 2 million gallons a day. So we did what we told them we would do. And that's the important thing for us. So we would need about 33 and a half, $34 million worth of capital to do this, just like when you, you need a, a big ticket item like your house, you mortgage it. And so that's the second piece of this slide, as you look at the annual costs. And the AMI is $14 million. We looked at spreading this over a 10-year period. Those meters, the batteries in those meters should last 20 years, but after 10 years, you lose, they're depreciated out, so you don't get a return on your batteries. The first 10 years it breaks, you get a new one. The second 10 years, it starts depreciating out, and you're going to get a portion back. So we thought a 10-year payment on that would be good, so that would give you $1.7 million a year. The blending tank, that $14 million, or $16 million, plus the horizontal well, we spread out a little bit further, over 15 years. So our annual capital cost would be about $3.4 million. In addition, we'd have operated additional operational costs. One is, we have that brand-new piece of our water treatment plant, which we use a lot of chemicals we haven't used before. We're using ozone, which you need liquid oxygen, you see, to buy some nitrate, nitrogen. So there's some chemicals that we haven't had to be fired, to bought, to buy before, that we're having to purchase. And again, it's just an operational cost, 3.5% increase in operational costs. You know, again, our last water rate increase was 2015, so in addition, a million gallons, a million dollars in operational costs is really, really quite, quite conservative. So our total cost that we need on an annual basis would be about $4.4 million. So how do you do that? Well, we just want to also remind our, our trustees that the blue line is the number of customers. So over the last 10 years, you know, we've added almost 5,000 customers. The red line is the number of employees, and this includes line maintenance, because those are the guys that fix the water line breaks and fire hydrants and things like that. So that's been steady, so we have added, continually add customers, we have not added to our personnel. So that's a big thing to keep in mind. We're really, really good at keeping our costs low. Our water revenues, we're a residential community, this shouldn't be a surprise, so we get about 80% of our revenues come from residential customers. The commercial, industrial institution, and interdepartmental, all are on the same rates. So we only have really two different rates. We have a residential rate, and then we have what we consider commercial, which is all the other rates. Weather normalization, again, this is, this is part of, of rate making 101. This is the last 30 years, you can see our water, our water demand kind of varies, and it varies with, with the weather. It's always increasing, because we're always adding customers, but you notice the increase, it's a decreasing rate of increase, because our customers are getting better at conservation. And I just want to mention this, because these are the last five years, or 10 years. When you develop rates, you want to look at what your normal rate, which your normal water consumption would be. This is 5 billion gallons a year, this is 4 billion gallons a year. If you develop rates based on 4 billion gallons, which was a, a very wet year, and we sold a little water, we would be essentially over-collecting, because we would never get, or we'd be under-collecting, no, we'd be over-collecting, we'd be setting rates on a low-water year. So we would probably have to charge more, because we didn't sell much water that year. So we'd be over-collecting, and similarly, you don't want to charge rates or base rate-making on a, on a high-consumption year, because we made a lot of money on that, that year, or, or at least we covered our expenses and costs, because we sold a lot of water. Well, that's not going to last forever, and so you don't want to base your rates on that. So you want to make sure you're basing your rates on an average year. Again, I'll just talk briefly, but the residential rates are based on two components. There's a base fee, which is whether you use water or not. You pay a fee for that, for the right to use water, and a lot of times, this would cover the cost of reading your meter, whether you use water or not. The computer to develop your bill, the stamp and the envelopes, and the customer service people, all that has to be paid, even if you don't use water. More recently, a lot of utilities are saying, well, you know, we should also include our debt service, because whether you use water or not, we just borrowed money for the treatment plant, or for the wells, or for something. So some of them include debt service. So this line here is our existing rate, and we're 36 below, 36% below the average. Our proposed rate would go from 750 to 950 a month, and would still be below. And so the other piece of your cost, you have your base rate, and you have your unit cost, the actual cost of how much water you use. Again, we're on the low side now, at 31% below the average, and our proposed rate of 450 would be 7% below. Here's our existing rate down here, where there's only one city less than us. And then here's our proposed rate, where there's, we're about in the middle, a little bit below average. One of the things you can look at is it that some cities, like Oklahoma City, Lawton, these two here, they'll charge the heck out of your base rate. From a business point of view, that's really nice, because I'm guaranteed money that way. Whether you use water or not, we get our revenues from the base fee. But also, if you look at that, like Oklahoma City charges a lot for their base fee, but then they don't cost, they don't charge quite so much as we're proposing for their consumption. This is nice, as again, for utility, it covers our costs, but maybe it's not so nice for customers, because customers would then have a pretty big fee, whether they use water or not. And we think there should be a better balance between, if you use a lot of water, you should pay a lot of money. If you use a little bit of water, you should pay a little money. So that's how we developed what we came up with as our fees here. So overall, we do have a tiered rate. The more water you use, the more expensive it gets, and that helps with conservation, and I can prove that in another time, another slide. But here's our proposed rates. And here's what we're, here's our proposed weights, and here's our existing rates. And so if you put that together, again, oh, there's another surcharge rate. In 2015, the council said, or trustees, excuse me, our trustees said that they really, really do want to promote conservation. We just went through a really dry year or dry area, so that was, that was still on their mind. And if you, as a residential customer, if you use more than 20,000 gallons a month, which is an awful lot, they wanted a 35 cent per thousand gallon surcharge on top, and it would only be for the months of July and August, because that's when our water system is really, really stressed. That's when, when we're pumping as much as we can do, or producing as much as we can do, so we really wanted to try to get some attention of people maybe thinking a little bit more before they kept using a lot of water. So here's where we come out. Our customers, 60% of our customers use 40,000 gallons a month or less. 60% of our residential customers. So this line here is where we are now. Again, there are only two cities of this group that are less than us, and our proposed rates would be up here, a little bit in the middle. Right now, our existing rates for 4,000 gallons is $20, $21, $20.90. Our proposed rates would raise it to 27.50, we would still be below the average, but it gets us more in line. And we're doing a study now, I don't have the results yet, but how often these other cities raise rates, whether it's annually, biannually, but we'll have that information as we go forward. So not everybody uses 4,000 gallons a month. Again, 60% of our customers use that or less. So if you're 60% of our customers, your bill would go up about six, not up about, it would go up $6.60 a month. Again, and the benefit here is if you use less water, if you don't use any water, it'll go up $2. If you use very little water, it'll go up $3 or $4. And if you're a big consumption person, it could go up $20, $22. Commercial rates. I'm trying to be very weary of time, and I can go over this really quickly, or we could just kind of zoom through and say, commercial rates are similar. Some cities really whack it to the commercial base unit. If you looked at the last thing, Ponca City was one of the lower rates for residential customers, but they're way out here for commercial customers. The average is $18, where we charge the same for the base rate for commercial or residential customers. So our base rate would only go up $2, we would still be well below the average. And then on the commodity rate, we would just be about, from 20% below average to 10% above average. This would be the commercial rates right now, the, what we have is, is a winter/summer rate, so as our, as our residential customers, we have a tiered rate, because the residential customers use a lot more water in the summertime, obviously, outdoor watering. And so we want to kind of conserve that, or make that more apparent to them, that they're using a lot of water. That's why the rates go up, as you use more water, to help conservation. Commercial customers didn't have a tiered rate, because you don't want to, you don't want to disproportionately harm a, a, a big commercial customer, like one of the hotels that use lots and lots of water, just because they're a big customer, I mean, or Cisco, or Johnson Controls. I mean, they employ a lot of people, they use a lot of water, that's what they do. So you don't want to, you don't want to hurt them by having a tiered rate. But what you do come up with is a winter rate. So this would be their winter rate. And in the summer, it's everything over their base winter rate. So again, this would probably be for irrigation. And so you charge just a little bit more, 50 cents a thousand more, to keep, to have them keep in mind that it's not the same rate year-round. They should look a little bit more if they're using a lot more water in the summertime, of how they can save money. Similarly, we can go through the commercial rates, you have your 5,000 gallons a month, commercial customer. They were, right now, we're 30% below the average, will be about 6% below the average. That's a small commercial customer, it could be a, a, a bunch of lawyers, it could be a retail store, it could be accounting, something like that. 10,000 gallons a month is starting to use a little bit more water. But we're still right in the average, our proposed rates are still right in the average. So here's that, for that chart. Again, if a commercial customer is not using water for a particular month, it only goes up $2. Their 5,000 gallon, it will go $9. 10,000 gallons, it will go up 16. And again, obviously, the more water you use, the more money it would charge. So that's it in a nutshell. The other things I want to talk about briefly, that we have not considered, but other utilities do, and it's because we have to ask our customers to vote on these things. So sometimes, if you try to put this in a ballot, it sounds, it's going to be very, very wordy, and it sounds confusing, but it's really something we should think about. Private fire service, all these sprinkler systems, that's an obligation of the water utility to provide a certain flow. Essentially, we're kind of saying that we will, in insurance policy, we'll have a certain flow to protect these buildings. We should charge for those fire services, a lot of places do. The cost, the meter cost differential. If you, your base fee that we talked about, that base rate, that, that $9.50, the proposed rate, is the same whether you have a three-quarter inch meter, like a residential customer, or you have a four-inch meter, like one of the giant hotels. A lot of places would have, if you have a big four-inch meter, that costs more money to replace. It costs more money to test, and it, and it provides more water, you should have a higher base fee. We don't. And then there's connection fees. We have new numbers now that we can talk about with our new wells. The wells are not 100% finished, or the pipelines, but we have really pretty good engineering estimates of what they would be. So we definitely need a water rate increase. The proposed rates I showed you will cover our needs, and we'd be happy to talk about that in, in detail, to go over what we did last time, what these needs are, or how we developed our costs, or as a trustees, you can look at, do you want more base rate, less commodity rate? Or we'd be happy to do any of that. We do have a small window of time as a water utility to raise our, our fees, and because people have to vote on it. So a, a really, a time to have the most appropriate time for people to vote would be late winter, early spring. Because, you know, we do, our customers, our residential customers use a lot of water in the summertime, and so when they end up with a big fat water bill in July and August, that's not a good time to ask them to raise their own rates. And so the most appropriate, apro, apro, the most, the beneficial time for us to ask our customers is late winter, early spring. When, when they use their normal amount of water, the wintertime amount of water, and it, it makes more sense. So with that, if we were looking at a January election, this coming right around the corner, we would have to have all this worked out by October 27th. Essentially, we do have it worked out from our end, if you would accept the rates that we proposed, but we'd be happy to talk to you more about them, or adjust them, or, or tinker with them any way you want. But that's it in a nutshell, as fast as I can make it.
Very well done, sir. Yeah, that sounds like we need to move quickly. Okay, are there any questions from council regarding this item? Brenda, if we wanted to get this on a study session, which I think would obviously be the next step, since we weren't able to have our retreat, would it be like mid-September?
Yes, that would be the earliest. You have a, you have a, one scheduled for September the 1st, but any other Tuesday in September is still open, and it looks like Councilmember Holman has a question or comment.
All right.
Okay, a couple things. I guess I'll start at that in part. When it comes to an election, I would probably prefer, I mean, I'd be okay putting it on the city council elections in February, on a runoff date, potentially, just so we can make sure we have enough time to thoroughly go over all of this with voters and residents, how we would need to do it, and the history of it, and things like that. The, I, I did want to clarify, just from Ken, from the last rate increase, the things that we promised voters, you kind of mentioned it a couple times, but what have we fulfilled, and as far as what was promised, that would be done with that rate increase, and what is left over, as far as what have we still, what are we still working on?
Well, it was important to do what we said, and, and the two big giant ticket items was the water treatment plant, that was $33 million. And again, I can check off all the boxes of what we did on that. So that's at its point right now, where it's up and running, but they're still going through the checkpoints and making sure everything's running correctly. What was the other big thing was, was wells. And so we have nine wells drilled, and we've, the, the houses are not up, and they're not connected, water lines are not connected to the distribution system, but the wells we drilled are all acceptable wells, we tested them all, and we know we can get our 2 million gallons. Those are the two big giant ticket items that we promised. We have water supply, and we have better water at our treatment plant, so that we did. The other little piece was, we talked about blending. Not the same type of big giant blending we're talking now, but we wanted to tie in some of our water wells. We went to, we hired a consultant that talks, tell us a better way of, of testing for nuclear, radio, radionuclides. And so we were able to blend some of our wells without the, the, a large amount of money that would, that would be repiping them, essentially, is what we were going to do, is re-pipe them together. And then the other piece was, I think, a little bit of money to purchase land. We thought we would need to do chromium treatment, or additional arsenic treatment, but that hasn't come through, so we just did not buy any land yet. But if we didn't buy the land, we didn't spend the money, it's not like we, you know.
Right. So I mean, pretty safe to say, though, that So I mean, pretty safe to say though, that last time we asked voters to increase rates for the water utility, the things that were promised that would be done have been done.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And these improvements are in line in accordance with the strategic water supply plan that that we've approved, is that right?
Yeah, the only thing that's not on the strategic.
The DEQ stuff.
Then, well, actually that and and the meter reading, the AMI. That's, that will be a benefit to our customers. It's, it's kind of, you have to pay it upfront, but that'll help our customers manage their own, their own rates essentially by notifying them of high water consumptions and and getting them information about their own water usage rather than once a month when they get a water bill.
Yeah. So on that specific part, I would love to see some more data on the cost savings that we might expect from that, that how much time does it take a staff person to do that right now? Versus how much time would it take for them to do, do it? Once these are installed as far as gathering that information, they don't, you mentioned they don't have to drive out. You know, they'll, so the time saved, staff time, what that equals in hours. And just a more efficiency, I think, is going to be a really relevant topic when talking to voters about why this is necessary.
And we can, we can do that.
Could you add in there, perhaps this lines up with our sustainability goals? Given, well, like, will we get alerts if we're using too much water, it might alert you to a leak somewhere?
Oh, absolutely. For the individual customers, this would be a huge benefit to them. And you as a customer, even if you don't have a leak, you can look at it on a daily basis. You should have a portal that you can say, how much water am I using? And alert our customer service and you if you have a leak. Or this, what we end up now with the the meter stops, it's like, that's unusual. Why the person's living there, but they're not using any water, what's going on? We need to know that because that's the cash register that allows us to build it.
Appreciate that, that I think that's a really important piece of this to, again, really make sure that voters are real clear that that aspect can really not only save money, but also help them understand their energy or their consumption better and maybe control it a little bit better. And the, so the part we're looking at that's going to be required, that we really have no choice to do is the DEQ stuff.
Right.
And you mentioned that's about sixteen million dollars in cost. So do we? What would be a plan if we weren't able to get a rate increase to address that specifically going forward?
Well, we've been putting them off for two years because they've pushed Edmund into doing this. And we're just assuming that, you know, if we don't get this rate increase now, that we're going to have to go back pretty quickly and ask for the money again. And and maybe knock off the AMI piece, which would be
Right.
This service to our customers, but we really do need the DEQ piece.
Okay, so that's just another big point I want to make sure we are real clear on is this is a a requirement that is above us, that we're being mandated to do, really have no choice. And then the, let's see, I definitely want to have more discussion about rate options and equitability for sure. I like the way it looks on the just surface first presentation, but I do think we'll need to have some further discussion about about how it's made up in the end. And then what, let me see. I guess, kind of getting an idea of what the overall rate increase would be. You know, a dollar amount for average residential customer combined, everything combined is what I was kind of.
Yeah, that's where, we could go over that, that one slide.
I know it's very, but.
Yeah, but sixty percent of the bills we send out in any given year is for four thousand gallons or less. And that would be six dollars and sixty cent increase or less for sixty percent of the bills we send up.
And just again, the last rate increase was January twenty fifteen, so will have been six years. The last time before that was nine years, two thousand and six, that there was an increase. And you mentioned that you're, you guys are looking into, you know, how often other cities raise rates. But in our past conversations, it is seemingly that other cities raise their rates every year on a regular basis. It's almost like just a standard increase yearly, you know, automatic almost. So fact in Norman that we vote on utility rates means that we do go years and years without raising them. But it often does result in that increase being a little bit higher than than I think many would prefer. But it's kind of the luxury of, I think, waiting six years in between to do, you know, once a day. Basically is what we're asking to do. And the fact that we've made, we've, we have followed through with the promises made to people. We've asked for these increases. And I am really looking forward to the the conversation about the cost of the wells. And we've, you know, we've had a lot of people ask about that. And what the real true cost of drilling those wells are and connecting up new houses or new properties. And then what those connection fees should be, definitely interested in those other revenue options that we could explore. In, you know, other communities that are doing that when it comes to fire services, connection fees. You know, I think those are, those are things we definitely need to be having conversation about. So I appreciate all the work as always, Ken, I look forward to talking about it further.
We have that information available now. If you wanted to talk about the fire service fees, the meter connection fees, anything, I just realized that we're pressed for time. But if you've got a couple of hours, we'd be happy to go.
Yeah, no, I'm sure the whole council will be wanting to be a part of that part specifically. But I do think we really do need to look at that, you're, the point about the fire suppression as well. Especially since we have, you know, bigger buildings being constructed in Norman that are residential that have, we require fire suppression to be built into them as well now. And so I agree, that's a cost that we need to be looking into to recouping if we can, so I appreciate it, Ken.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Hall, you got anything to throw in there?
Not at the moment, but I really appreciate all the effort that went into the presentation and lots to consider and think about. I am really interested in continuing the emphasis on the conversation, on the conservation piece especially.
Thank you. I think my only concern is the appearance that we keep asking for more money. You know, last November, we did have a sales tax election, but it was not an increase. We are asking, asking for a property tax increase now. So my biggest concern is if we go January, I mean, there's no difference between January, February and April. And they're all very close and they're going to say you're coming back for more money, even though it's a completely different thing. And in any other city, we would not have to have an election for it. So that is something I am cautious about, but it is what it is. And Councilmember Holman did a great job of outlining all of the reasons why this should be a non-issue. I'll throw in, even with increases, we're still below average on all of it. So there are a lot of things to hammer home and that is something council will have to consider. So Madam Clerk, why don't we go ahead and schedule this for September eighth? You know, eighth or the, you tell me eighth or the fifteenth, I know we have our COVID nineteen update on the first, which I I do not want to budge on. Given things are already changing rapidly in Norman, so we we need to hold that one steady. But Mr. Kaminski, I, maybe we can pull you out of retirement in the, you know, January, February, April, come help us out. Maybe do a few videos, I'm sure Bryce could hook you up wherever you end up, we could put you to work, what do you think?
Sure, I'd love to.
He'll be bored in retirement in two weeks, that's my prediction.
That's right. We appreciate you so much, but thank you for the presentation today. And whoever is going to attempt to fill your shoes, they're going to have a big task at hand right when they dive in. So I hope you will offer some great mentorship and keep an open line of communication as we navigate this journey.
Absolutely.
I'm going to miss you.
Yes. Let's go ahead and move on to our second item, which if Catherine has not arrived, I believe that is Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that at council. So similar theme, I'm going to kind of share my screen here, make sure I can get that going. Are you seeing that?
Crystal clear.
Okay, thank you. So similar theme, we need more money. Sorry. Less urgent than Ken's, we, I think we all agree that the water rate increase is the most urgent issue for the city. But we're hoping that maybe after today, you'll hope, you'll think this is the second most urgent issue to put in front of the voters. The street maintenance bond program is what we're talking about here. We are not a utility authority or a rate based program, as you know. Street maintenance in Norman falls in the general fund and the capital fund. And and then we have augmented it with this bond program starting about fifteen years ago. And it was a brilliant idea that the council advanced back in two thousand and five. And we've done three programs since then. Want to mention, I have Tony Mensah, our street superintendent on the line with us today. Tony did all the heavy lifting to put this together and we are, with his help and his staff, we are ready to bring this forward to you and the and the community and whenever you're ready. Obviously, this is your first time seeing it. But just quickly, little background, I don't think anyone on the council has been through this election before. So this, we are in our third street maintenance bond program. It is a five-year package that we've advanced three different times. The first one was in two thousand and five. There were actually, I think, five propositions on that election, this was one of the five. And it passed fifty-three, almost fifty-four percent. At that time, this is a property tax based bond issue. At that time, we advanced about eleven million dollars. And again, this is bond funds that we use to augment our street maintenance program. This one totally focused in neighborhoods. It's really important to note, we had a, for many, many years, we've been doing arterial street projects and maintenance and maintenance and improvements. But we fell far, far behind in our neighborhood where we live, those streets that get less traffic, but still need a lot of maintenance. And that's what this program was designed to do. We jumped out there, did a lot of great work. And then when that program ended or finished up in two thousand and nine, two thousand and, back to the voters. This time, the property tax valuation was able to bring us to a nineteen million dollar program without a tax increase. And the voters approved it almost sixty-five percent. I think the reason that happened was similar to Ken's program, we delivered on our promises, we did everything we said we're going to do. The the voters liked to see us out there in their neighborhoods, improving their streets. And they, and they gave us a vote of approval that time to come back and do some more. So we did that, this time nineteen million dollars in improvements. And then that ended, again, five years later, went back to the voters in two thousand and sixteen. And I don't know that there is a program like this in Norman that I've been involved in, where the voters approved it at a higher rate. Again, that year, sixty-seven percent at that time. And this one, again, because the valuation increased, brought us to a twenty-five million dollar program. So we are in the last year of that five-year program right now. And I, Tony is advancing so many bids, I can't even keep track of them, honestly. But we are probably out there working on goodness right now, we're probably hitting twenty different neighborhoods today or this week. In fact, it's very apparent because Tony has been getting lots of calls from frustrated citizens this week. And I've been getting some of those calls, not because we're doing anything wrong, but because we're out there hitting so many neighborhoods with so many contractors. I literally, we literally had one in Ward Six this week that they all posted on social media, they were so frustrated with all the activity. But it's because we were doing so much in their neighborhood. So I never remember getting criticized for doing too much street maintenance, but that happened this week in the Park Place edition. So anyway, it's just an indication of what's happening, we are really out there doing lots of work. But if council doesn't advance this to an election sometime between now and July of next year, that money will end and we will be back to a very basic program. We won't have enough money to really do much work in the neighborhood, so that's where the question for you.
I have a quick question for you. So if we don't vote it by July and it lapses essentially, let's say we plan it for August, are we, do we lose anything?
Yeah, great question, Mayor, thank you for that. And I I think we lose a really important it concept, it's not, we don't, you can always go back and do it whenever you want to. But you won't be able to say it is a no new tax vote. And that has been really, really important, I think, at least in the two elections I've been involved in in two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen. And I think you you all have seen that too, you saw that on the transit vote. Just the way it feels to voters is if you're telling them that they're going to get this program for no new taxes, it seems to go better in Norman. That's just all there is to it. And so if you can do that before July first, that mill levy will will continue at the same level, will keep paying the same level of property tax. And in this case, we'll get twenty-seven million dollars in improvements over the next five years. So that's what I think you lose if you don't do it by July first. Not the end of the world, but I think it would, it would have a better chance of passing. And we would continue with the momentum, we would never lose a beat in in advancing these these heavy projects out in the neighborhoods. Other side of this, this screen is a little pie chart that we, we did a a pretty elaborate polling of our citizens back in two thousand and eleven as part of our transportation, conference of transportation plan. We basically said, if you had a hundred dollars, how would you spend it? And really interesting, our citizens have always favored maintenance of streets. And so they would take thirty-eight of those hundred dollars and put it in the maintenance. That was back in two thousand and eleven, we don't know what they would say today, I suspect it would be very similar. But also, go ahead.
Is it possible to take the twenty-seven million and since it's an increase, maybe leave twenty-five million for street maintenance? But really work on bike paths and lanes? I mean, because of the pandemic and whatnot, like, and I know Norman's unique, we're mostly a driving community. But like bike sales around the world have gone through the roof. I mean, maybe now is the time to invest in sidewalks and bike paths with a piece of this since we did get an increase. And then you bring in, I mean, everyone drives for the most part, but you see what I'm saying? Is that, is that possible to diversify it a little bit?
Absolutely, that's really why we're here today, council can package this any way you want. I have to defer to Catherine, though I think if when you add in bike lanes and sidewalks, then suddenly you have to have a sixty percent plus one.
That, that's correct, and that's what I was going to point out.
Yeah, that's, and that's a little dangerous, that's again.
You can have bike paths or sidewalks as part of a street project. But you cannot have bike paths or sidewalks as a separate project and still qualify as a public utility for a separate majority vote.
Thank you, that's very important.
So very quickly, what do we do with this? You all have, kind of get our annual report on this, but this is, again, neighborhood streets, that's the most important message I'll leave with you here. This is not the Robinson Streets, the Lindsay Streets, the twenty-fourth and thirty-sixth, this is the streets where we live. And we have miles and miles of those in all eight wards. It's a pretty balanced program, we do part of it urban asphalt, rural asphalt, I'll show you some numbers here in a minute, urban concrete. So about, about sixty percent of our street system is asphalt, about forty percent concrete, just by way of comparison. We do a reconstruction program, sometimes what we've got streets that are just, there's no sense in putting an overlay on it, the street is gone. It needs to be replaced, those are very expensive by the mile. So we have a portion that we've done in the last couple of programs. And this year, we're offering a preventative maintenance program, we've been trying to get to this all fifteen years. We've never been able to get back to just doing thin seals and overlays and more crack sealing, which is really what most cities really want to do. You want to get to the point where you're, you're putting less dollars into the maintenance and covering more miles. And we're proposing to do that this year for the first time. What's important, I think, too about this, the way we've done it, is we actually give a list of exactly the streets we're going to do as part of the bond or the ballot ordinance. And so when people ask, well, if I vote for this, what do I get? And so when people ask, well, if I vote for this, what do I get? We literally give them a list of streets, usually in a range of two to three hundred locations. There's a map that we published that shows exactly which streets we're gonna, we're gonna touch with this program. And then every, every one of these five-year programs has come in under budget and council has had the opportunity to go back and do another million or two million dollars worth of improvements on a new set of streets, once we know that we have that surplus. As I've mentioned, we, we do have the documented results, I'll show you that here in a minute. And the other really important part of this program is our partnership with Cleveland County. Our rural road program is a combination of city crews, our crews, we have a paving operation. We, we combine with the county's crews, primarily District Two, Derry Stacey's group. And, and we are doing those projects in-house, we're doing those with city crews, city equipment, county crews, county equipment. And we're doing it for a fraction of the, the market rate that we would do. We can do that because these are out in the, you know, the less developed areas, less traffic, and we can take our time and, and do those projects. And it's really a valuable program, kudos to Cleveland County District Two. Here's kind of the way the previous years kind of break out, if you just wanna see the numbers in terms of how many miles we covered and where the dollars went. Again, we've tried to kind of maintain the same formula in terms of how, sort of a percentage going into asphalt, the urban asphalt, urban concrete, rural roads. I mentioned to this a few times over recent years. For the first time in Norman's history, every public street is now paved. For the last thirty years, we have unpaved roads in Norman. We paved every last mile two years ago, which is a big, I think, milestone for our city. And it was, it was done through this program. So now all of our streets are paved, all of our rural roads have been addressed. And you can see the drop off in the miles of rural roads now, because we don't have to go back and, and, and deal with the gravel streets and the problem areas. So that allowed us to put more money in the urban asphalt, urban concrete and reconstruction areas. So this is just kind of, and a couple of pictures of what it looks like before and after. Again, to your question, Mayor, the, the, this is a no new tax proposal, we think that's really important. The, the proposal we're making to you tonight, you can, again, you can mix it up however you wish, this is consistent with past programs. Is about sixteen percent into the reconstruction category, that's that really expensive going in and replacing entire roadways. Most of that has been in Ward Four, because those are the oldest roads that we have. And then the other remaining eighty-four percent would go into the other categories of urban asphalt, urban concrete, rural roads and preventive maintenance.
What about, what about a bridge? Does that fall under the same sixty percent? Because we know we have that long list of bridge, can we knock out a bridge this year?
I, I know we've had that question, I don't think it falls in the same category as, as paths and sidewalks, I have to.
Yeah, no, bridges, bridges are a public utility, that was simple majority.
So you could do that, again, we've got lots of, lots of needs there, so no question about that. But a couple million, really, the average bridge replacement cost is about two to four million. Tony has that summary for you as well, if you wanna look at it. Happy to do that. Again, I, I'm a little partial to this program because we, it's really working. You know, when you find something that's really working, you keep doing it, maybe? And that's what, what we've proven here, and it's working with our voters too. So I'm happy to add anything you'd like to, to it, but we just say that this, this, this program is really tried and true and proven and, and our voters really like it. Want to mention here, we, on all these roads, we go in and replace storm grates that are not bicycle safe and any other drainage structures. No major stormwater work, but we're, we're not gonna leave a street without addressing all of the needs there, like the upgrading of the bike safety features and then basic drainage improvements if we need them. Here is the proposal with the, the new five-year program added in, kind of shows you what we've been able to develop. Again, we're developing this using our pavement management system, this is not O'Leary or Mensa picking our favorite streets, nor is it council members picking their streets and their wards. This is, this is selected based upon need and based upon a documented system of, of pavement management analyses. So these are the streets that need it the most, these are the streets where the dollar is, is best spent, we think. And it comes out to about a hundred and fifty-two total miles of street maintenance, which is a lot. Again, that's, this is just a summary of our pavement selection criteria, lots of things that we think about. We just finished our, our annual update of that report that we give to you. I'll, we'll be sending that out here in the next couple of weeks to each of you. And you'll, you can see kind of how the streets kind of played out. But it's basically a zero to a hundred rating system, a pavement condition index of sixty-five is kind of where we would put the dollars for the rehabs. And our goal all along here has been to get every street in Norman seventy or above. We, we'll probably never get there because we have so many streets and we're adding more every year, but we are making progress on that a lot. And here's kind of the way it looks today, this is the most recent report or analysis. That pie in the above seventy range is growing every year, and that's how we know this is working. I think most cities would kill to have what we're, what we're doing here with this program. And it's the street maintenance bond dollars that are allowing us to do this. So the goal here is to get that, that pie less than sixty-nine down to, you know, zero. We'll never get there, but we are really gaining on it. And our, our average PCI today is seventy-five. When we started this program in two thousand and five, the average PCI was about sixty-seven. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're dealing with eight hundred miles of roads and all the complexities, we are making great progress here. And this kind of just shows you how we, how we view that and how the program works. So thank you for that, I know I went through that quickly, got plenty of time to think about it, but kind of like Ken, we'd like some direction from you. Are you thinking about maybe a, you know, a March or April or May election, you know, what's your preference? And, and any direction you can give us on the, on the plan as proposed, so thank you for that.
Well, first, I, I would like to add this to the study session with the water rate increase. I think you have to consider them at the same time, even if we don't end up putting them on the same ballot. We need to have all of the information about what's coming towards us in two thousand and twenty-one, including timelines.
Agreed.
So, okay, thank you, Councilor Hall, come, go ahead.
We would put that then on the, the second study session in September, so you wouldn't be limited to an hour.
That was what I was worried about, if we're gonna do that, yeah, we can't do it before a council meeting, so what date would that be?
No, it would be the fifteenth.
Okay, we will plan on that. Councilor Hall, did you have anything else to add?
Not right now.
Okay, Councilor Hallman?
One thing I would caution you about is you can't just have the election, we actually have to close the bonds by June thirtieth. So you really need to have the election comfortably March, but April would kind of be dropped dead as, as I would read it.
Thank you.
I think Stephen has something to add.
Okay. So I was on council for the last go-round on this in two thousand and sixteen. And I absolutely agree with Sean, it is an extremely popular program. It has the last go-round included several streets in Ward Seven that are near the stadium off Lindsay and Jenkins area. There's still a couple, couple of projects that are, I think, still, still on the way to be done from that, from all that. But it has really worked, as I talked about, for fixing and improving neighborhood streets. Most cities invest a lot of money in the high-traffic visible streets, the main arteries, widening those to, you know, four, five, six lanes, all that stuff. But a lot of cities really neglect the neighborhood streets or just don't have the resources to do it because of everything that's been built over the decades. So we're real fortunate in Norman to have this program and that voters have been willing to support it the way they have since it was created. Because as Sean mentioned, we now have, all of our public streets in Norman are paved in one way or the other. And, and the improvement from the sixties to the mid-seventies is real significant in the terms that he's talking about. So I, I would definitely wanna see what, what streets we're proposing this, this go-round. Because we, we all get questions about, you know, when is this street gonna get fixed and this and that all around the city? So I'll be looking forward to seeing that list. I would definitely support, you know, looking down the road, if this and the water rate were on the same election together, I would be okay with it being with the city council elections in February or the potential runoff for those, I believe would be April. So I, I definitely am looking forward to talking to people further about this because, again, it's, it is very popular and it's been very effective. And we've been able to follow through and fulfill every project promise that's been made, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Ken, what are your thoughts on April for the water rate?
April would be doable. Again, we're just trying not to, to remind our customers, we need more money when they have the highest water bills. So, you know, it's just obvious that there's just a, you know, a time when it's not on their mind is a good time to ask for adjustments.
Okay, I would think, based on that theory, April would be dead last as well.
Yeah, because in, in May, we often start hitting some peak times, if you get a really hot spring, because people love their yards and the first thing in the spring, if it's nice weather, they water the heck out of it to plant shrubs and do whatever they want to make it beautiful, because they're tired of winter. So sometimes spring comes early and they start early.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of worried about. I don't know how much I love having it on a council election for what could conceivably be a very interesting council election in February, let's just get that out there. But Madam Clerk, if you could, and I'm sure you already planned on doing this, at our study session, have all the first reading, second reading deadlines, because I think Councilmember Holman is right too, that we need to have time to talk to our residents, especially if we're possibly considering shit, and don't panic, Sean, but mixing up the street maintenance a little bit to try and spread the love around to address some of our other infrastructure needs. So let's, that's good for now, if there's no other questions, we'll plan on learning a whole lot more on September fifteenth.
Thank you very much.
I'm good, okay, thank you, gentlemen, and again, sorry, I would have preferred to have you at the retreat, but it is what it is, and we'll get the retreat scheduled soon. With that, let's go back to Catherine Walker, I think she's got, is gonna kind of kick off the sidewalk recruitment that I daydream about, because we sorely need it.
You gotta take off, Bria, gotta go get ready for this Reeves Park meeting.
Gotcha, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Are you able to see my PowerPoint?
Yes, we are.
All right, we'll dive right into it. I wanted to talk a little bit about how sidewalks get built now, because this is part of what's probably leading to some of the, the issues. Their typically sidewalk requirements are triggered by development, so when a land is subdivided and goes to the development process, they would be required to build those sidewalks either as, as they plat or as each lot gets developed. And this prevents construction of a sidewalk, only to have it torn up later when someone comes in and builds out on the lot. But it does lead to gaps in sidewalk paths, which is an issue that we hear a lot about. Since nineteen ninety-seven, the city has allocated capital funds to sidewalk programs very consistently. These are the five programs you approved in this year's budget. And you'll actually have an item on your agenda on Tuesday related to sidewalk, these sidewalk programs and funding for that. And cities, as we talked about just before, we can issue bonds for sidewalks, but it does trigger that special vote requirement. So three-fifths over approval or sixty percent would be required. You can do assessment districts under state law, and then our local ordinance, we use often for recruitments. And so I'll talk about each of those quickly in turn. The assessment district process under state law is pretty involved compared to our recruitment process, which I kind of thought was a little complicated. So it's even more complicated at the state level. So under this statutory provision, typically this comes into play when owners of more than half of the land that would be liable for the assessment petition, the city for the creation of a district, the district has to be at least one block in length. We would then engage an engineer to develop plans, develop an assessment plat and a cost estimate. And then council holds a hearing and determines whether or not to adopt the plans. Once the plans are adopted, we would construct those improvements, adopt the final costs and appoint appraisers who then apportion the benefit and the cost of the improvement among all of the affected property owners, file an assessment roll and then hold a hearing on it, and those assessments will be paid back over ten years. So the city's upfronting all the costs and then over ten years, we would get paid back. Recruitment is pretty similar, and this is what we typically use when a road project that we have occurs before development has occurred. And really, it's designed to level the playing field. So properties, when they go through the development process, they're required to dedicate right-of-way and easements to us. But when they haven't development, haven't developed, they benefit from that road improvement, yet we would have to pay them potentially for easements and rights of way. So this really is a process to correct the inequity that's created when we pay a property owner for something that they would then have to dedicate to us later when they developed anyway. So similar steps, not quite as detailed, but you declare the recruitment project at the council level. And it would apply under our ordinance only to undeveloped parcels. And then, once the project's completed, we develop the final costs and, and we seek assessments or liens for each of those final costs. And, and that's typically whatever we paid the property owner to acquire the property for the project. And so if you donate to us, we don't include you in the recruitment for those costs. And then construction costs over and above any bond proceeds or federal funds we may be using based on the parcel's linear frontage. Once the project is done and we filed the final costs, if the land is developed during the next fifteen years, the property owner pays whatever that final cost was for their property at the time of development, plus any inflation or deflation. If it's developed from year fifteen to twenty, that amount that they owe reduces by twenty percent each year. So if they don't develop in twenty years, the city has fronted all of the costs and the property owner doesn't have to pay any part of the recruitment. The challenges with both of these approaches, of course, are that they contemplate the city upfronting the funds. So it's a matter of finding the money as, as usual. And then, because sidewalk construction would be occurring prior, prior to development, you have that situation where we're assessing a property owner and requiring them to pay us for a sidewalk we constructed only for them to have to replace it when they come in and, and build their building or develop their lot and the construction equipment damages the sidewalk. And so I, I think that could be a, a, a potential issue or challenge. With that, I just wanted to introduce the, the topic, if you guys have any questions or you want additional follow-up, I'm happy to do that.
Well, Councilor Hall, since you're kind of the, the last one on here, what are your thoughts on, on further exploring this? Because I know clearly my, my wheelhouse is Ward Six, but there are certain areas that we've just been waiting forever to be developed. And I always come back to Twelfth Avenue, also known as, you know, State Highway Seventy-Seven, Sooner Road, seeing motorized wheelchairs in the street, because we're just waiting on these sidewalks to come in. And that's what, what's haunting me and why I wanted to look into this, but I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I'm really intrigued with this and would like to look into it a little bit further. And I think, you know, for Ward Four, got some other interesting consequences, I think, but I, I would definitely like to look into this just a little bit further.
Okay, great.
Ward Four would seem to me to be kind of perfect for the assessment district approach, because you have blocks with no sidewalks, and if you had fifty percent of those owners wanting to construct the sidewalks, then we could go through that process.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm real interested in the, in the differences between, you know, both of these approaches and how, how it would play out for Ward Four, where we have, you know, so much aging infrastructure.
Excellent. And I'm, I, my apologies, you know, with the Zoom format, especially on my iPad, I can't see everyone. And Councilor Foreman is on board. And I will tell you, Councilmember Foreman, you are two Ward six people after me. I campaigned on finishing sidewalks and it's, no progress has been made on that one. Because again, we're beholden to developers to come in and fill it in. And luckily, Ward six is developing quickly. But before I, I turn it over to you, I, I did have a question for Catherine. What about, and I guess this might play into a Ward four issue. The property that comes to mind is Porter and Rock Creek, that old meat market across the street from the Seven-Eleven. It's an old piece of land. How does that work? Like, do you buy it? Do you have to not just buy it, but build something before that kicks in? Or is it just exempt because it was developed before this rule came in?
Sean may want to answer that, but I think that's, my guess has already been platted. And maybe it was before, you know, I don't know why sidewalks wouldn't have been required. It might be an issue of what it was when it was platted.
Well, it's old, so I'm assuming it was before.
Yeah, I know.
I think if, if memory serves, I think it is unflatted. It was developed long before the planning was required or something like that. So similar problem, if someone has to go in there and buy it, demolish existing buildings and start over. And we've been, again, waiting for that to happen. It seemed like a prime piece of real estate would just have the, the family just holding on to it.
Because I'm trying to get the sidewalks to school to fix that one too, because it leads to Norman North. And you can't, there's no sidewalk on the south side. That north side is the, the only one. And full disclosure, that is part of my running path, so full disclosure. But it is on the way to the school, so that was something I wanted to bring up. But Councilmember Foreman, do you have any additional thoughts on pursuing this further?
If I could add just a little bit to that, to that section you're speaking about there, Mayor, that is actually ranked and we have it on our sidewalk list at this time. It just doesn't rank very highly. Currently is ranked number thirty-eighth, which is quite a way down the sidewalk, uh, school sidewalk arterial program. But it is one we're watching. We do have it assessed and we do continue to check that one to see if there are changes that would make it go up in the rankings.
Well, for what it's worth, I appreciate how y'all keep it mowed because that, that does make it a little more manageable with using as, because you can see it, just like Councilmember Hallman, if he was still on, I'm confident he would tell us about Constitution. You guys know what I'm going to say that he's brought up before, the area where there's no sidewalk and students walk there. From Google, you can see the walking path, they've cut into it.
Yeah.
And Councilman Foreman?
No, I think it's a really good idea. When I was talking to a lot of people with Hall Park, like they want to be able to walk around that area and there's no sidewalks. You know, I'm constantly driving home when Norman North is out of school and there's a lot of kids walking and there's no sidewalks. So it's really hard the further you get out. I know that it's maybe not as populated as like core Norman, but it is an issue. And we do have a big population that gets out, they walk, they run, they walk their dogs, they got strollers. I see people with strollers on the grass. So I'd be really interested in pursuing this and seeing where we could go with it.
Well, it sounds like Ms. Walker, I think we want to look at both options, the assessment district as well as the recruitment opportunities. I, I really appreciate you bringing up the challenges that recruitment involves money upfront. We get, and you're gambling that it will get developed. And I'm pretty sure the areas that have been pointed out to me, at least in Ward six, because it is developing up north, would eventually get there. But it is time to consider all of our options. You know, we need to have a very, if we're going to be public transportation friendly, it's all of the things. It's not just the bus, it's bike lanes, it's good sidewalks. And I think that is a key piece of quality of life for our residents as well. Again, you mentioned strollers, wheelchairs, going to school, physical activity. It's time we look at this, so I'm, I'm excited to move forward on that. Do we want to do that again here in finance? I'm fine with that, given that it clearly has a financial piece to it. And we haven't done the map like we usually have done this time of year to see who it goes to what committee. But I'm comfortable leaving it here, again, given the financial nature of it.
I'm fine with that. I also really want to, one of the downsides that you brought up about, I sure don't want to put us in a position of doing a sidewalk twice, so I think that through too.
Agreed. So I mean, maybe that ends up with the sidewalks all the way up to the, the street, so it leaves room on the land. But, uh, again.
I want to think that through.
Yeah, worth, worth having a conversation about. And I appreciate you all being open-minded. And Ms. Walker, you doing the beginning research on that topic. But we have eleven minutes left, so Mr. Francisco.
Um, okay, so in eleven minutes, I will just say that all of the information is in your packet related to the monthly financials. There were some very interesting things to me this, this latest month or two in the growth of sales tax, which was a total shock to me. And certainly a total shock in its magnitude. I was hoping for flat and in this past month we were up eleven and a half percent, which is, you know, very unusual. Kim has actually done a lot of work trying to investigate if there was any anomalies. And when I say anomalies, what can happen in a given month is that some big retailer or something had a, had a settlement that the tax commission levied against them and they have to pay it in a lump sum. But there was none of that recorded in this month. So it's really reflecting economic activity in this month, which is again, surprising, but very good news. We hope that it will continue. We've had some anecdotal theories about why that may be. But it's also very interesting if you look at your intercity comparison, where we are comparing our sales tax growth and decline to other cities in the state and in our region. And we were up substantially, Midwest City was up substantially. It's kind of like the suburban cities were up, but the big cities, Tulsa and Oklahoma City were down. And, and again, I have no explanation for that, but, but that's just the fact. So we'll continue to monitor the situation. We're just very interesting trends related to the pandemic responses and people's consumer behavior in relation to that. You, some of you may recall my hamburger theory as, as a proxy for economic development. And we got a hell of a lot of hamburger in our freezer right now. We, we have stocked up on a lot of food and nobody is, is willing to cook it. So, so I don't know if that's a proxy for the overall economy, but it certainly is for our household. So, so that's really all I have to, to, to preview any questions that council may have. I'll try to respond to them.
Well, Mr. Francisco, I've heard a lot of city analogies in my day and the hamburger in our freezer may take some sort of award. But, uh, Mr. Pyle, yeah. You had, I think it was you who in another meeting had, had your own theories. Perhaps we're staying, I'm so glad, by the way, we closed the use tax loophole before we were all stuck at home and living off Amazon. So thank goodness for that and shout out to all of the, the federal legislators who helped us with that.
Federal legislators didn't do it, that was the courts. We're still fighting the legislative battle to close the loophole in the, in the court decision.
But surely there are some federal legislators that are fighting this battle for us.
All the Oklahoma legislators are against us.
For those of you watching, this is an excellent opportunity to call your federal legislators and remind them that this matters. So thank you for clearing that, clarifying that, Mr. Francisco. But that has helped, I think. I know I've done my fair share of Amazon shopping and most online shopping, but also staycations. We're not, maybe we're not going to Tulsa and Oklahoma City the way that, you know, a close-to-home vacation. It is straight up, we're going camping, buying a bunch of camping supplies at Walmart within Norman. Oh, and I saw, I saw NPR also said that cities with Walmarts have managed to survive and those without have taken a big hit because, for obvious reasons. Any other comments or questions for city manager or our finance director? None from Councilor Hall. Where are you, Councilman Foreman? There you are, hello. Do you have anything to?
I was just going to say sad, depressed people shop on Amazon, so.
Well, thank you.
You know, you see commercial, you need that all of a sudden, right? So.
Yeah, I have long since given up the battle to try to get people to not shop on Amazon. But please make sure that when you look at your receipt, that, that tax has been recorded on there because it's supposed to go at the point of delivery.
And I do enjoy the curbside pickup that a lot of our retailers, both big ones and local ones, have made the move to because that has helped me feel safe with my shopping, but ensure that my dollars and sales tax dollars are staying right here in Norman. And so I, I will put a plug for, for those of you in our community watching, please shop local as always. And, and as Mr. Francisco just said, check those receipts. It does make a difference. It has always made a difference, but in a pandemic, when, in the state of Oklahoma, where we're the only state in the nation that ties cities to sales tax to support our general funds the way that we do, it makes a very big difference, especially with our small businesses and small restaurants. And we are seeing doors closed way too often right now. And if, I mean, if you're concerned about the virus, which we should all be, curbside pickup, order it to go. There are ways to continue to enjoy all of our local retailers and restaurants and, and still keep your health a priority. Councilor Hall?
I was just going to throw in there too. I mean, obviously it's not just about collecting sales tax to run our city, but to supporting, supporting our local businesses is just critically important right now because we want them to stick around. That's what makes Norman unique and interesting and why people love to live here is because of all of our local businesses. So please, please, please support our local businesses.
And when you do, take a picture, put it on social media, encourage your friends to go there too. Lots of ways we can, we can support many different functions that our city relies on. Excellent point, Councilmember Hall. If there is nothing to add, I am thoroughly impressed that we got through a beefy agenda in an hour and twenty-six minutes. Thank you all very much. I think we have our direction on all of the items. Please correct me if I'm wrong, now is your opportunity. Saying none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Your Honor.